Bill Morocco, Rosarus Drive and Ledgewood. I wasn't going to come up a second time, but just listening to some of the residents' concerns and outcries, I have to say I share some of their concerns. I personally had a concern about the notification of the daycare facilities. And I can't understand why there was a hesitation to notify nursery schools and daycare facilities, knowing there's young children there. And knowing that it was indicated that some of the directors really didn't have any idea of the issue. I had to jump through hoops to get the township and the Department of Health to work together to send something to them. So you're not doing everything that you can. And I don't think you should be patting yourself on the back because my daughter goes to those schools and she's let outside on recess and those directors did not know how to check the monitors or what levels should even be a concern. And you all look down. I'll move on. Guess you don't care.
That's not what we said.
You didn't say anything.
You didn't say anything.
Let me ask you, excuse me one second, Bill. Didn't Mr. Glass want to do it?
I'm not, you know, Mayor Barrett, I appreciate it. But there are positive interactions and sometimes there's not. The letter did go out, but I appreciate it.
My intera-- I'll be fair, my interactions with have been mostly positive. But this is something, I can't fathom what the con is. There's pros and cons to everything. What is the downside? Unless there's someone putting pressure on you not to spread awareness, it's extremely suspicious that that is happening. And if that's the truth, tell us and we'll move our forums somewhere else. But it's very suspicious that you don't like to share bad information with people.
I don't think that's the intent, Bill. I really don't. I mean, I have no problem sharing it personally. And I don't.
Wow. You're not the one that's responsible to notify the nursery schools. I'll move on.
If I had that responsibility, I certainly would do it.
That one, that one, you know, deeply affected me, so I know I'm a little upset.
I can understand your concern, and I can understand as a parent your concern.
But, you know, if your children were at risk, I think you'd be up here as well. And I don't think there's any excuse for it. I still don't understand it. But I think you need to listen to these people. You know, these people elected you. You work for these people. You should be listening to them. Everything that they want within your power, you should be doing. There's no excuse not to. I'll move on. The stack tests. I saw the stack test about a month ago, so again, I'm disappointed that we're just reviewing them now. There's people here that are, you know, they email you, they tell you that they're getting sick, that they have all these symptoms, and there doesn't seem to be a sense of urgency. Further, you know, I'm not an expert, but I reviewed the stack test for about 15 minutes. I couldn't get past the first few pages, so I don't even think the information in there is worth reviewing. I mean, right on the cover page, they state it's not a compliance test, no protocols were prepared, removal efficiency was not determined, there were no analytical reports for VOCs or other reduced sulfur compounds which may be present. And they even had a disclaimer that the H2S measured going in on one of the stacks was greater than what was coming out. I'm sorry, what was coming out was greater than what was coming in. I'll finish in a second. So I think I know what happened because I saw the raw data that was released several months in advance. I think they took some very preliminary numbers, and when we pressed them for a stack test, they took what they had and sent it to this company, and then four months later, they gave you a report. And it's all bogus. And I don't know if you interviewed them, but it seems very deficient to me.
I'm not going to give them a permit. And what you said is correct. It's right, you're just, you're basically reading what, right from page seven or something of their language, saying that this was done for baseline purposes. When we have a permit, as you know, they use like 10 or 12 parameters, and you test initially once and every five years, and you have a mission permit, criteria. And they, there's a couple parameters that are common with Warren County District landfill. And I have a draft report. I've been, it probably will end up going to Tony by the end of the week, not next week, probably by Friday. I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you. And I've been saying this, as you have, for a long time. But again, this is the wrong group to be yelling at, the DEP. I'll give you Ed Pudman's direct line, call him. I called for stack tests, as they know, on their behalf a year ago.
I just don't, I don't understand how this stack could be allowed to be operated without this data, and how the township could back this plan, knowing the DEP won't cooperate with you. How could you back this plan?
Would you want us to go in there and chop it down? We don't have the authority to do that.
I mean, this has to go to the SO2 quickly. I promise I'll make this quick, but, you know, I mean, Chris, you went up here and you seem happy that they're going to shut it down at 75 parts per billion. I don't want 75 parts per billion. I spent many nights looking at that. Those health-based EPA Clean Air Act standards, they are protective of health. Those are weighed upon industry acceptance and cost on implementing them. They can't afford to make it safe here. We never had a baseline here that was high. Before that stack was in, we had SO2 monitoring for a few months back in the summer. They were zero, one, two. Now we have issues with this scrubber, and we have high levels. I don't care if it's 50 or 60. I don't want that. All that means is there's fewer asthma attacks, fewer deaths, and fewer hospital visits compared to zero because of that, because we never had it. How is that a good solution?
The level they set affects the power. I'm not saying it's good or bad. That's the level they set.
You're sealing the fate for this township for the next, I don't know how many years. And I just have one last question.
Go ahead, Bill.
And it's from Mr. Zoe. You know, you're knowing all this, and I know technically there may be some advantages, but knowing the agency we're dealing with, their unwillingness to share information, there's something going on behind the scenes that none of us know about yet, knowing the sites proximity to residential homes, and the effect that this has had on this township, the fact that DEP can't control this for over a year, why don't you feel excavation is the best solution? And why aren't you continuing your investigation to fill in some of your assumptions to potentially show that it may be?
After the meeting we had, what, April 11th, or whatever the date was, I continued. And I actually, to answer some of the questions, I tried to get approval to just take samples of the spoils from the pile of when they put these 30 gas wells in. Not to test it chemically, I just wanted to weigh it. I wanted to come up with a density measurement that can be used for some of these assumptions. As you, I used a one-to-one ratio, the DEP independently used the same. We didn't know each other, we both picked it. I have reference documents that has a large range. They wouldn't even allow us to do that.
Well, that would just determine cost.
That would determine, it's one of the parameters. That's one of the biggest parameters.
I think that first we have to, you know, determine, is it possible? Is it, is it safe?
If, I'm not in charge of it. If I was doing it, if my forum was doing it, and I was working for Roxbury and Chris Glass and the mayor, I'm confident that I can do it and do it right and be safe, and I'll probably be here more advanced than they are right now. Now, now, I can't, I can't tell them what to do. I mean, I've gotten kicked off the site. I have, they cooperate occasionally. I, my report, my letter report for the emissions are probably going to be similar to your thoughts. I would like to see a true stack tests that are the same parameters of the PCFA with the same criteria done by the DEP protocol. I think that is what we've been asking for a long time. And I'm disappointed they didn't even do that. I understand that it takes time, but it's not like a stack test you do every three months. I mean, there's an initial test that's very important, then you do it every, usually typically every five years. And I don't disagree with you, Bill. And that's what's probably going to be in my report. Again, it goes through the attorney.
I don't understand.
But if they do it right, if they cap it right, and they say what, you know, you have a set of drawings and you have a design, but then going from that to actually constructing something on paper looks fine, and we're monitoring it. Your town pays me to monitor it and go out to the site on occasion and keep in touch with Ed Pudman and other folks at the DEP, and I report back to them.
You know, they don't even know the sulfate content of the material, so how do they even know how much gas is potentially to be generated? It's all a big assumption. Design basis is a big assumption.
Do you, I agree, but again, their solution is to stop the precipitation from entering the material.
Over time.
For cutting off the anaerobic bacteria eating up the wallboard. That is their, that's their solution. So their answer to us was, we don't need to know.
I don't know. I mean, you're expressing concerns, the township, you keep saying you share our concerns. I'm sorry, but this township is becoming a place where I myself, I don't think I want to live. Maybe you don't want to live here with the way things are going.
Let me out.
I mean, you guys got to do something. You guys aren't crying loud enough. The press, help, senators, EPA, you got to do something. Because what the DEP is doing to this site is destroying this township, and I don't think it's going to end for many years. Please do something. Thank you.
Just a minute, just a minute before I could go.
Yes, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, just, there was one other thing that I meant to bring up when I did my presentation earlier. Today, Joe Dunn notified me, just today, that the meeting on soil conservation permit that DEP has submitted is tomorrow at 2:00 at their, at their center on East Hanover, across from the, across from the disband center. So the address is there, but he just notified me today. Okay, that's on their soil, sediment, and erosion link.
What time?
2:00. 2:00.
Anyone else have a question? Yes, ma'am. Do you have your name and address please?
Brendan Har, Lookout Drive. That's who asked. Brendan Har, Lookout Drive. I just wanted to follow on to what Bill said about, you know, level of service. And, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, I became a wife and I chose that, and I became a mom and I chose that. And that put me in service to my family. And, you know, when, I don't feel good about going to bed at night until I know they're resting comfortably in bed at night. Now, you say that, you know, you feel okay, you know, that you've done so much and everything, but, you know, I don't feel like enough has been done until we're going to bed at night feeling like enough has been done. And in that regard, there hasn't been enough done. I can't leave here knowing that my elected officials and you people wouldn't be here, well, I'd like to believe you wouldn't be here, if you hadn't chose to serve this community and be in service to this community. And I want to go home and go to bed tonight and know that my elected officials that were elected to serve me have my back and are doing everything they can. And I don't feel that way. I go home and I go to bed with a shore house that's destroyed, with a husband that's been unemployed for a year, and with half a million dollars invested on that mountain up there that's lost. Now, I am going to move my family out of this town, and I, you know, I don't know what's going to become of us. I don't know if I'm going to spend my retirement years in a gutter at this point, but if I do, my daughter's health is more important. And she woke up this morning, mommy, I have a sore throat, I have a headache. I took a look at her, her eyes were swollen, and she doesn't know anything about sulfur dioxide.
Tell them where you live on overlook.
Lookout.
Lookout.
I'm about 300, 400 yards from the land.
Where the SO2 spike was today.
I didn't know anything, I didn't know anything about the spike this morning. But I can tell you that now my daughter has reacted consistently with the SO2 spikes. You know, she may not be reacting so much to the H2S, but I can tell you she's reacted consistently with the SO2 spikes. And I didn't know anything about the spikes. I didn't even, you know, look at Facebook until like three minutes before I came to the meeting and just happened to see something. I'm not even up on it today because I was so busy. But, you know, in terms of service, I mean, that's the main thing I want to say, is, you know, I want to go to bed feeling, and all these people want to go to bed feeling like you guys have our back. You're spending a lot of time? I'm sure you are. I know you have. Many of you have said you have, and that the DEP is so difficult, we know that, and not responding. But we never get away from it, ever. This is 24 hours a day for us. The time we're putting in trying to do our homework, trying to speak up for ourselves.
It's for us too.
Yeah, but, but we don't get, we're the ones with little kids that are being affected. I cried when Governor Christie tweeted out his kids on their first day at school in all their crisp white shirts and all their big smiling faces. I cried because I had to send my daughter to Jefferson Elementary at the bottom of a highly toxic mountain, knowing that there's like freight train of hydrogen sulfide going down the mountain. I cried. I've given my left arm to keep her in summer camp, then sent her to that school this year. You know, it's us that has the kids. It's us, it's us that are, we're losing our homes. We're losing our homes. I'm going to disrupt my family. I'm disrupting, I mean, my husband's not happy that I'm making us go somewhere else, but I know too much about this landfill. I don't want to live next to it. My daughter is too important. She's my, I'm in service to my daughter. And if I lose a half a million dollars, I lost a half a million dollars. My daughter's health is more important. But we don't ever get away from this. And the impacts to us are that severe. And, you know, I shouldn't even have to say that. Like I said, I want to walk away from here knowing somebody has my back. And so far, the only people that I feel have my back are these people. And that's what upsets us so much. I want to leave here knowing you guys have my back. And if it's some miscommunication that we're not getting, we need to fix that. We need to fix it big time. I'm willing to do that. Any of these people, I'm sure, are willing to do that. We don't want to come here and yell at you and fight with you.
We don't, we don't like that.
We don't want that. You don't want that? So what do we do? I've said this before. What can we do? I'm willing to give up more of my time even than I'm not spending with my little girl to come and talk with you, to do anything, to say what can we do to fix this. We don't want to yell at you. You don't, we don't want to be aggravated with you, you don't want to be aggravated with us. I've asked before, how do we work together then? We're more than willing to do that. But we need to feel that we can go to bed saying, they're working on it, they're trying to help us. We know that. We say, what do you want us to do? We stand here and we tell you week after week after week after week after week what we want you to do. We want the town behind us. We want the residents to know. 23,000 voices is louder than 1,000 voices.
Amen.
The reality is, you're not going to get 23,000 voices behind you.
No, the reality is.
Because they don't care, some of them.
Yes, I know. Not only do they not, not only do they not care, some of them are terribly missing.
I talk to people. I see a lot of people at the color line, you name it, I see people. And unless they're living up there, all those poor people, and I say, yeah, they are poor people.
It's not in my backyard.
But they're not going to be with you all, not a big deal.
You don't know that. You guys don't know that until you send them better out. You don't know.
We have someone speaking called Lee.
Well, give her the right answer. That's wrong, sir.
Well, I'm sorry, Carl, but enough. You know, I'm not.
What, what are you going to do? You know what? I'll go outside.
Thank you. The thing is, if you need to, call them up and say, come stand with me in a picket line. Because short of me doing that with you, and I've been there, I've been down to China, to every meeting they were talking about earlier with the legislation, with, he's not here tonight. Mr. Schultz, my name just go out of my head. But short of doing that, we're doing everything we possibly can. His father, the senator, is working on it. Jim Riley talks to Mr. Park.
Been working on it since 2010.
And questions him.
You know, maybe I, maybe I can talk to you.
That's why Mr. Zeller's here tonight to answer some of your questions.
Maybe I can talk to you more extensively about that, because I'd be happy to do that, to get a better understanding of it. And you're right, I mean, the residents, there are people out there that are, you know, think we're a bunch of complaining fools up on the mountain.
No, you're not.
They don't know.
You're not. We don't think of it like that. With residents that live in the other part of town, not in my backyard.
Or they don't know. There's people that, yeah, don't really understand the issues and will never take the time to understand the issues, and unfortunately, there's an apathy and there's.
It definitely affects them, anything, not just this.
Right. And that's why we're asking for some communication about the impacts directly.
But they do know about.
To them, because there are impacts to them that they may not understand. And so, like I said, we're, you know, we're asking and asking and asking for things that, you know, we would like to see happen, and informing the residents is one of them. So, you know, I'd be happy to spend my time talking with, you know, any of you or all of you to get a better understanding and try to help with the communications on both sides. I'd be more than happy to do that. I am, you know, like I said, I'm caught in the crossfire, just like a lot of these other people. And, you know, we're losing a whole lot. I'm putting my family through a tremendous amount. I'm taking them out of the town, at least for the summer, probably beyond, depending on what happens to the landfill, and at tremendous expense and tremendous burden to, you know, the entire family. And, you know, I really, I would be welcome the chance to talk to you personally and get a better understanding and try to improve some communications if that's what's needed here. But again, I want to go home and go to bed knowing that my elected councilmen have my back and are really trying. And we don't know that, so happy to talk with you, and I will try to do that. I'll extend myself to do that.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. Your name and address please?
Joan Morocco, Pleasant Hill Road, 77. I just wanted to know if there's a monitor that is close by my house to know when I'm looking at the chart? Because I do feel, I think, effects last summer, our eyes burned constantly. You know, I don't think it's a problem that's just on the mountain. I think it's in Sakasana also. Other residents I've spoken to do have problems there too.
There is a, there's, if you go on the website, you'll see the monitor map, and you'll be able to determine which one's the closest to you.
I know, I see, I see Lookout Drive, I see, I see Jefferson area. So that's Jefferson School. I mean, am I closest to Pleasant Hill Road near the Redeemer Church? Am I closest to Jefferson area?
I think you probably, yeah, you're probably closest to Jefferson, but you're probably in between Jefferson and the wanted to ride a road field as well too. So I bet between the two of them.
Okay. So last Tuesday night, I couldn't sleep all night, and my daughters woke up both very dizzy. I felt like I had a sinus infection. My daughters, I'm an inhaler now, just gone to the doctor, you know, I explained to him what I thought it was, and he really didn't know anything about it because he works in Denville. You know, is it a cumulative effect, this landfill?
Depending on the levels, depending on the levels per each, you know, for the H2S.
Because I thought, oh, for sure I have a sinus infection and I'm sick, and, but then the next day, I was sick. So last Tuesday night to Wednesday, when I looked on the things, I saw that it was up to like 23 parts per billion, and I saw no alerts.
No, they wouldn't, it's over an hour. There was, they were doing some operational, they had some operational maintenance that they were doing. They did have one little spike and it came down. It was a 26 for a very brief period of time, and it came down at that time. You know, that is, all of the questions you, you know, you raised, there's some good questions that will, they're going to be reviewed in this process.
With the AT.
Yeah.
Okay. So, but if I could just request, what about the Kennedy School kids? I mean, I know that certain schools are monitored. A monitor at Kennedy School, could I request a monitor?
You could, you know, you could request a monitor, but it's just like that we had a request for a monitor on Lincoln, on Lincoln Drive in that area earlier. We put the monitors in there because that's where we were generating, one of the reasons was that's where the generation of the most complaints were. That's where the winds, the smells, when it was at its worst. That's where the winds were carrying it, and it provided us an advance notice to the schools. Not every area in the town, from anecdotal complaints, not every area in the town were getting complaints in regards to the smell.
Okay, but with all due respect, I think that things must change, and winds do change, and things can change. My daughters do not go to Kennedy School anymore, but I think those children at Kennedy School should be protected with monitors also.
I, we'll talk to, then we can talk to the DEP, we can talk to Dr. Tierney as well too, and see. But it, when we, it's an ever-evolving situation, okay? And you've asked a question, I'll look at it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Do you have your address please?
Dan Massey. Sorry, Dan Massey. That's okay. Three things, I think they'll be quick. Number one, the map that's online, is it current? Because to me, it doesn't look like, it looks like there's some detectors missing.
It was just updated to show all the locations. Apparently the map was cropped, and it now shows all the locations.
Okay, so it goes all the way up to Jefferson and, okay. Okay. Other two questions. So maybe Councilman Schmidt can speak to this, or anybody else. I know Roxbury has an environmental commission. I'm confused as to why the environmental commission has not been actively involved in all of the Kenmore issues. I would think this is probably one of the biggest environmental issues that Roxbury has ever seen. So can someone explain to me why the environmental commission isn't engaged on this?
I think you spoke to Trish Regali.
I did.
Or emailed her, and she gave you the answer, same answer that I'm going to give you right now.
Okay.
And the same one that I gave months ago. The environmental commission is advisory. The council will occasionally go to the environmental commission and ask them for their input, okay? And that's basically where it stands. We have experts that are doing this for us daily. The environmental commission really meets month to month, and it's not, it's not there. It's just, they're not there every day for this.
It's a gardening club.
We need daily.
Well, so I agree, it's become a gardening club, and I don't think that's what the intent of the environmental commission is or should be.
It's not experts either.
Although you certainly, you know, I've heard a number of statements, you know, I'm not a scientist, I'm not an engineer, from this panel, you certainly have some of those people on the environmental commission at your disposal.
We have one person that's a scientist, that's Trish Regali, and I think she's answered any questions that the council has thrown at her.
Okay, okay. The third question, real quick. Councilman Zochak, you mentioned you can't go and chop the scrubber down, which, you know, you can't. But what other kinds of actions can you possibly take? And let me, all right, so let me ask this. Shortly after the last council meeting, as we all know, there is an announcement that Senators Smith and Assemblywoman Spencer have called for an investigation of the DEP's actions.
They're committed, that's correct.
Right. So where does the council and the mayor stand on that? And has the council or the mayor contacted either of those two offices to support them, to offer any assistance, to offer any information?
Mr. Massey, we, as a council, and put out a press release, we sent it to every news organization in the state of New Jersey welcoming the senator's actions and the investigation.
And was that the extent of the action? You put a press release out and you haven't contacted either of their offices? Is that?
Is that not enough? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's not enough.
That's exactly why.
The press release is not enough.
Did you really think that would be enough? A simple press release?
We sent out the press release.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take one more question. Lady Hodge, please.
I have your name and address please? Kathy Fennata, 14 Raritchin Avenue. We've been getting sicker. I know you've been hearing that a lot. I've had to try to move out of the house because I've had a migraine since February. Captain Benetta, 14 Marichin Avenue. We've been getting sicker. I know you've been hearing that a lot. I've had to try to move out of the house because I've had a migraine since February. So if you would forgive me, it takes me a while now to absorb things. I can't even watch TV anymore, look at any kind of a screen, forget texting. So paying the bills is quite an effort for me, even. My daughter Nikki went from one lump under her arm to two, so now we're worried that it might be lymphoma. We have to go to Robert Wood Johnson's to get that checked out. I think we have to move. I don't think we can wait for this to happen anymore. I can't wait.
Take your time.
For a diagnosis.
It's scary.
I knew something was wrong last night. I have a dog that reacts to the SO2 and the H2S. He's a mutt, he's a dummy from Georgia, but he drives me nuts. Whenever the levels are high, he sits on the bed and tremors and pants all night. And that was happening last night. I have a little purification filter in my bedroom, and I have the door closed, and it doesn't seem to help him. So I know it's coming in the room, and I don't know what it's doing to him, but I know it's hitting me, too. And my, all my kids have filters in their rooms, and I spent like $1,000 on stuff. I don't know what else to do. My question, Mr. Zeller, I'm also a celiac. I noticed I've been getting inflamed, and I looked up online, and wallboard also, and spackle and stuff have gluten in them, which sets me off, which affects my word retrieval and makes me achy. Is there any chance that there's, with the new wells, and with the old wells, and with the, with the scrubber? I know we know there's asbestos up there. Is there a possibility that's being sucked out and sent out in the atmosphere, too?
I, I don't know.
In the other sites you've studied, is that, is that a possibility generally?
I don't want, I don't want to get into speculation. I'm not a doctor. Your questions are really medically...
Well, you're a man that studies scrubbers, right? And landfills?
Let me see if I can reframe your question a little bit. Based on your experience at Warren County and the scrubber that you, that was installed there, does that have the ability to extract different types of gases from the landfill, including other particles, and, and clean them before release?
Well, how do you clean asbestos?
I'm just asking, just trying to...
It's a fiber.
I'm not, I'm not familiar that asbestos is a, an element or a mineral that is either tested in stack tests, so I have, I can't answer your question.
That's a big concern. I mean, asbestos, everybody knows is a big concern.
Well, it's not in any stack test protocol ever seen. So, you know, something to bring up when you talk to the...
So it's a possibility that it's shooting out asbestos, it sounds like?
No, that's, I'm not saying...
I know you're not going to say it, but we're pretty much convinced that that's...
No, I'm not saying it because I don't know.
We don't know.
We just don't know. We're waiting, we're waiting again, right?
No, you can't say that either. You don't know.
Let me ask the question a different way. No, we ask a question...
Now you see what I mean.
If asbestos were in a landfill, and it was an issue that these scrubbers could take asbestos out, would this be something that would be covered by the EPA and DEP in terms of testing and permitting?
Can we get the EPA to test for asbestos?
It's such a hypothetical question. I've never heard that asbestos is a concern with a gas, a gas landfill, gas collection project.
They've dug more wells, and there's got to be asbestos there. It's all over the landfill, so I just...
It's not, it's not all over the landfill.
But how do we know it's not in those sites since we can't even get a look at the tests?
I'll look into it.
All right, we'll, Mrs. Benetta, we'll have Mr. Zeller look into it, and we are past the time and have to close the public portion.
Just a quick question. Is it normal for dioxins also to come out? I tested positive for dioxins in my blood work.
I don't know.
Tell me anything about your blood work.
We, we're not qualified to answer that. Thank you, Mrs. Benetta.
He is. He's our, he's our expert, and he can't tell me if dioxins come out of scrubbers.
That is not his expertise, Mrs. Benetta.
Get somebody that has the expertise.
Thank you very much. We are going to close the...
We got one more. We got one more.
No, I'm sorry.
We know you're sorry. You guys work for us.
How can we say you're doing everything you can, and you won't even listen to us? You are not doing everything you can, and you won't even listen to us.
You won't listen to us.
You never set a time limit.
Public portion is closed.